Call this meeting to order at seven four eight P M.
I've.
I've.
The agents to the flag of the United States is America and for which it stands, a nation under God.
Indivisible, with liberty, justice.
Justice.
My team. Hello, Daddy, how are you? How's your time?
She's busy, Nina.
Come on, come on, Nina.
Yeah.
I'm sure.
Yeah.
Okay, let's go spend much time. Thank you.
I don't know.
I couldn't make it all work in fifteen minutes, Rob, so.
Yes. All right. We're gonna move the reading and the approval of the minutes to the bottom of the agenda, but we don't have to because you're here. Okay, so yes. So we had a chance to read the three minutes from our last meeting and so are there any edits or questions? No. And. But I have a motion to approve those minutes.
Us. Motion to approve the minutes from uh March eleventh, two thousand twenty five.
Wait a second. Second, all in favor? Hi. Hey. It's moving on to the acknowledgement of visitors.
We have um Mailese Priya and Kayla Harrington online.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Hi.
And moving on to correspondence and community input. Has anyone received any? Respondence or community input that they would like to share? I think not.
No.
I haven't.
Is there anyone online that would like? To unmute themselves and share?
Madam Chair, is there no hands waving or microphones unmuting?
Okay, well then we'll move on, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, the examination and authorization for the payment of bills.
And those are being distributed, nothing unusual, supplies, special aid tuition, lunch. Nothing out of the ordinary, there's legal bill on there, small one, hundred and sixty two dollars. A total of fifty one thousand, three, twenty, seven, sixty five. And so wish to. Who? For list of bills.
Could I have a motion?
Motion to approve the expenditure fifty one thousand, three hundred and twenty seven dollars and sixty five cents for the bills presented at the March twenty fifth, twenty twenty five school.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right. So moving on to the superintendent's report.
Okay, as you were. Um, first, Patty, in our met with the finance committee, I believe it was last week, seemed to pick it was two weeks.
It does, really, everything's blending, yes, it was last week.
One week and a half ago, uh, to present version four of the school budget. Um, it's my first time in front of your finance committee, but it seemed like it was well received. Uh, Patty, you've probably been there before, they understood our um needs, I think. And I think they heard that we understood the town's financial situation, will support the full-time counselor, they support the uh implementation of a math and E L specialist and wish it could be full-time, but they understand it's a sort of a pilot program a little bit and that uh in anticipation of it growing and that we would be able to get documentation out of our first year to support that. So uh I think that meeting went about as well as it could go.
I'll agree, I think it went very well, given the circumstances.
That's the first item, the van actually is in the garage getting stenciled right now, and I promised it uh after the weekend. So I may drive it to school on Monday, so that it's here and ride home on the train. The greenhouse project is um starting to unfold, the kit actually gets delivered, the steel part of it uh ships on Monday. It takes a couple of days for it to arrive, that's the steel components. And then their suppliers ship various other parts of it, you know, a polycarbonate comes from Texas. The fans and heaters come from another organization, but the actual cutting of the structure of the kit is um is coming from New Hampshire. Uh, this Friday, I'll be here in the hunt because I'm meeting with the building inspector. Um, Jimmy Connors from McGrath Enterprises, who's gonna do the foundation. And Mario Spanucci, who's gonna be our general contractor and do the few final touches that the company from Deerfield, Mass, who's gonna put the structure up. Um, actually figured it would be more to our financial advantage, knowing that we were um tight on our budget. That if we had that finished off and uh right now the plan is to have Mario do that, that's the hanging of the heaters, the actual putting up of the doors, even though they're all framed, but the structure will be erected as soon as the foundation cures to early May and then finished off, wired, hung gas room from the school and ready to operate in the fall. The brick fundraiser is going well, I think, there were sixty eight bricks sold to date. That's uh five thousand, five hundred and seventy six dollars worth of profit. As long as we go over the hundred cutoff to go from twenty dollars per brick to eighteen dollars a brick, so there's a two hundred dollar potential savings by getting to a hundred. So my goal is to get to one oh one, uh, we ought to be able to get there. And um I think it's gonna be a really nice project. Uh, superintendent's lottery, I think I talked about that back at the beginning of the year, that's on your on the table there, occurs tomorrow, this is round number three for me. Uh, back in uh November, first person that drew my name was Kayla Harrington, I'm reading sixth teacher. She's online, they kids came to my office because it's a strong class of uh six, seven, eight, nine kids, and they all sat around the office and um we honored the memory of nine eleven and the event surrounding that with the power plant, the kids were great with that. Uh, grade three, Gabby Radamacher, a little bit better on, uh, we borrowed, commandeered, lack of a better word, a Rockport bus and drove them to Plymouth Plantation so that they could have their field trip uh free of charge, except for a fuel charge that we never got charged, which was nice. And use my uh C D L license to get them down there. And I also went to her classroom and I did a presentation on holidays around the world just before Christmas. And I probably learned as much as the kids did about the different holidays that are celebrated around the world. And tomorrow, I start off uh at eight ten at morning meeting. And Lydia Antrim, grade two, is written down, join us in the classroom for a morning meeting, be in the hot seat for students to ask you questions. It feel a little bit like Pete Hegseth by going to a news conference and uh and we'll see how that goes. You never know what they're coming to ask for questions, so I'll be prepared for that. Uh, and then it says break or join us for the African storytelling assembly in the library. And I'm not gonna take a break, I'm gonna go watch the African storytelling assembly with the kids. And then during snack, my assignment is to sit and chat with the second graders. I then do a guided reading group at the end of the hall from nine forty five to ten thirty. I then have a brain break, which is pretty good for me, and at ten forty, I facilitate a math station. At twelve twenty five, I either take a break or join them, and again, I'm gonna join them, she won the lottery. Uh, for a seed dispersal science activity.
Nice.
I'm not sure exactly what that is.
Oh, it's awesome.
Outside or from inside, but uh as a former science teacher, I'm looking forward to that. And at one thirty to two oh five to end the day, uh, it's writing, um, work with second graders on their final draft of their third-person narrative. I always knew what first-person narrative was. I knew what third-person narrative was, and I wondered, is there a second-person narrative? And there is a second-person narrative, it's the uh voice of the author using the terms you do this and you do that, as opposed to I in first person or third person talking collectively about all of us. So I learned something today, and the kids learning that at second grade, which is a fairly complex skill, I think, to understand that, and then to write a piece in that uh that thing. So that'll be my day, and again, I've done this for a long time, it's my way to have a hand within the classroom, and teachers don't have to play the first day of school, they put their name in a hat, draw their names out in the lottery. And uh, there's a couple more coming up, we'll see how the end of the year goes, but it's fun. It's what school's about, it's kids and classes, I'm looking forward to that. And town meeting, right down to May seventeenth, twelve thirty, at ten o'clock. Uh, Saturday, April twenty sixth, our town elections. And um, I believe that, please, my rep.
Oh, thank you, fabulous things, I'm jealous, that sounds like a fun day that you have.
Looking forward to it.
Moving on to the principals' report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I have um, I, as you know, I haven't been to the last few meetings, so I have some um updates to share with you tonight. Happy to do so. We said goodbye today to Cal Fanocchiaro, our phys ed teacher, she's going on to take a full-time position designing kitchens. And her family required her to have a full-time position, so that's why she's departing. We all wished her well with an ice breakfast and off. And our long-term substitute P E teacher is Jamie Garber, she'll be starting on Monday. She is certified inexperienced, she spent six months substituting in swamp scott at Clark Elementary School. And she's completing her student teaching right now, she's earning a master's degree in phys ed from Salem State University. And I'm looking for, looking forward to having her join us on Monday.
Nice.
Yeah. Our next session started this week, and we had lots of nice offerings with lot of great participation. We have a trail crew and a gardening crew working with me and Ms. Brandy. We have a yoga class on Thursdays, we have board games club on Mondays. We have two art classes, one on Monday, one on Wednesdays, to split the age groups, both well-enrolled, around fifteen students apiece. We're continuing with Spanish, we have Spanish for upper, for older students, and it's a small group this time, but we wanted to keep it open, it's just three students in one of the groups. But they're excited about getting ready for middle school and making sure that they're in a good spot. And so they've been taking that with Ms. Weber, and we also have grades one to four Spanish taking place. Um, Riley Edmonds is doing fitness fun for grades K to three. We join, we have a grant from Girls on the Run to run a running program. It's for boys and girls, but as the name implies, mostly girls signed up. That was um, Brendan Creighton got a uh health grant, and he, that's able to fund the staff members for that program, although the, the parents do pay what they can. The last class I want to mention is dyeing with native plants. Diane and Brandy and Gail Gullia is gonna be running that, and that was through a grant that I wrote from the Arts Council. They have about eight hundred bucks to collect native plants and make them into dyes, so onions, skins, uh, poke weed, uh, beets, things like that, they're gonna be, we originally planned on weaving, but we had a whole lot of first grader signups, we decided to shift to tie dyeing, god's eyes, and felting, and so they're gonna be um dying raw wool, and then um using needles to um make um two and three-dimensional items.
Okay.
Um, we have an event coming up tomorrow, we are blessed to welcome an author, published author, Adi Ari. She is from Nigeria, and she's doing a program called African Storytelling Reimagined. Um, this is for preschool to grades two, and she'll have um artifacts, uh, traditional um clothing to share. And that'll be in the library in groups of about thirty to forty every hour or so, and I wanna thank the P T O for sponsoring this.
It's brilliant.
Yeah, I'm really excited about it, and I got to talk to her on the phone, she'll be coming in tomorrow from eight thirty to eleven thirty. And I, I really find that the artist is a good opportunity to bring diversity into the school because it's something that everyone can appreciate, and it can bring in other cultures. And um, and we have a couple of students that are connecting with this individual because we have a student that recently joined our school, and her mother is from Africa, not Turkish country. And so she decided to meet the author, we also have a student whose mother has a tea company in Kenya. And so she has a, and this little student has a, has a friend in Kenya, so just trying to make connections with people and and um realizing that all different folks write books and it's gonna be sort of in the idea of Aesop's fables where animals are struggling with something, uh, you see the turtle cracked its shell, how to overcome adversity, so that'll be part of the theme for that. I also wanna share that we've been working on the geese problem out in the fields, and the current the current plan is to use, um, we have a couple of fifteen-foot poles, they're aluminum, that would go in, and they'll have these um eyes, big eyeballs on them, and so those are supposed to help scare geese away, we've gotten a couple of emails from parents turn about, about um bird flu and the different viruses that birds carry, and there was, and we're debating whether or not the geese are just passing through, we're gonna keep an eye out, Maiden Merritt will weigh in on this. Are they, my idea was that the geese have kind of landed and stayed, but we haven't seen them in about a week. So I wonder if they go find another golf course and then come back.
They do move around, but they're here year-round now, they don't migrate anymore because of the changes in temperature. But they do move around, a lot of times, they're the ones that you see at the rotary.
Yeah.
At the end of the windway or crossing in front of your car in an inopportune moment.
Same flock, they just go pick that grass for a while, and then come to our grass.
And then, and they go down to the softball field, I'm right in the middle of the flyway, so.
You see them.
I hear that a lot.
So I'm, I, I'm looking at a more longer-term plan, maybe making that field less um amenable to geese by putting a hedge, some type of a wild hedge row in where they might be afraid there's a coyote in there. I know that if you interrupt the um large green spaces, they're gonna be less likely to land there, so just looking at some natural things that we could do to discourage them, because the kids do track in the goose droppings and, you know, we make sure we wash our hands as much as we can during lunch. But it's just unpleasant to see, most of the droppings are actually grass, so they're not soaked, it's not like dog mats or something, at least.
Yes, um, where are you gonna fix these big, big eyeballs?
I mean, I have um some alum- aluminum poles that, that are um have a stake in the ground.
All right.
So that's what we're planning to fix them to.
And are you concerned about um people are not allowed to do that, some of them?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that that'll happen pretty quickly.
Yeah.
So these are um free for twenty dollars on Amazon, so, and we can, we do have um security cameras there, so hopefully I could see if somebody took them, but I think they would be play objects pretty quickly.
Uh, I mean, my boys were here before because they had migrants, and they were definitely eyeing the guys.
Oh, yeah.
A running.
Oh, yeah.
So I wonder about asking the school community to partner with you and telling them about the cameras.
Great, great idea, just a little education.
Yes. Um, and the other question I had, Mr. Andrews, is just that, you know, you and I talked a little bit about this, I know the program is called Girls on the Run.
Yes.
And I love that this girl's only programming, except that you had indicated that this is coed, in which case, I, I, I do think that that might be a deterrent to not include like J E S on the run, or Boys and Girls on the Run, or They're All on the Run, or.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know if that was a deterrent, maybe a boy, sons of boys in the program, but.
No, I, I would like to see what we can do about that next time it's offered, because
Okay.
it is a nonprofit that's called Girls on the Run.
I know it.
So you, yeah.
I do, and they're great, in trust. I know when I talked to my own kids, they were like, but it's Girls on the Run.
Yeah. Right.
Um, I couldn't really argue with that.
No, it's true, it's true, we had a couple of students that were considering it, as you, you and I went back and thought a bit on. And so I'll um, I'll see what we can do for branding on that.
Okay.
Uh, Champions oh is um, has open enrollment right now, so they, they are accepting um registration for the fall and are working to hire a director and counselors for their program. And I've referred a couple of applicants to them as well, so I'm, I'm, I'm glad that they were, they were able to make it to our open house, this is the new after-school program.
Nice.
It's gonna be starting in the fall, this is more of a natural care rather than enrichment, it is enrichment as well, in fact, they're gonna come in with four big wooden cases that each have a theme, whether it's art or STEM or um movement. And um, so they bring in their own supplies, bring their own carpets, of course, bring in their own staff, and they're gonna set up an elaborate, we've had in the past, but I think I think it'll be a really great program, looking forward to seeing how it unrolls. It looks like it's gonna be about um one seventy-five, one seventy-five per week for um hours up to five fifteen. Um, for five days a week, but you can also pick fewer days if you like, you can pick part-time, and the schedule is very flexible.
Has anything gone out on Darren Square about that?
Um, yeah, I, but I think I could do more with that, I'd be happy to do more with that.
Yeah.
Especially with just the core group that I've always been communicating with. I'll do that, just to make sure, because it, you think, I mean, lots of info goes out, so it's always good to have a standalone flyer. I'll do a standalone flyer with the link to sign up again.
Can they give us a status report on how the movement goes?
I haven't heard yet for how, how they're doing, but, um, after this push, I'll, I'll make a report for next time.
Great, thanks.
Good thing.
Kevin, can you refresh my memory? Is there a minimum enrollment that they need?
They claim that they don't, they claim they'll start with five students. Their, their idea right now is to get, to build a relationship and build trust in the community. And they'll move forward with what they have. I, I feel like it wouldn't be a hu- big hurdle at all to get twelve to fifteen, a nice dynamic. Because that was what it was looking like when I was going to be offering something. Um, and that was midway through the year, and some people have already sorted things out. So I think having a, a new start in the fall where everyone knows well in advance that this is gonna be the offering. If they're going with something, private individual right now, they'll be more likely to sign up, I think, in the fall. Knowing that we have a cohort coming together. And seeing, and seeing the materials and the, the pitch that's been in the newsletter, I think would help.
Oh, yeah.
So, um, so, so to answer your question is officially no. They, they said they'll start with five. I guess five is their minimum, which would make sense. But I don't think that, that's not, that's not a financially viable minimum. I think that's just, uh, let's get some kids in here and make sure that we have something started for you. So they committed. And then I wanted to like know about our school council goals. We have Laura Chaney, Kayla Harrington, who's on the call. Um, we've been meeting this year to talk about our goals. One of the goals is to, is to recommend to the superintendent to fund a full-time counselor. As he's mentioned, and it sounds like you've been able to do that. Also to adopt and implement a new math curriculum, which is underway. Also to look at personal development on trauma and, um, and, and how we can work with students who are, have been affected by trauma. Another goal was, is to look at, um, making sure that we're continuing to make our school an inclusive environment. And my focus around that is somewhat small and a little narrow, but I think it can have a big impact. I went into Al Bean, you know, it was, um, the Al Bean, it was, uh, yeah, the Al Bean, I went in and they had a nice welcome sign that was branded with Al Bean. Everybody can go outside or something like that. I forget where it was. So I'm looking for something like that that could be on our door. Uh, just, just, just to let people know, right when they come here, we're, everybody's welcome here. Um, also, we talked to the staff just about making sure that new students know that our gen- our gender-neutral bathroom, our family bathroom is open to everybody and finding a friendly way to make that clear to folks. Another small piece I did was in this, in this office here, I put down welcome and then I put down welcome in Spanish. Um, just, just to let folks know that, you know, we're thinking about everybody. The final, uh, item on our school council goal was onboarding, um, updating the onboarding procedure for new staff. And making sure that everyone has, is comfortable getting the training right at the start of the school year, getting their handbooks and things like that. We have been met a lot of new teachers. We want to look at what the P D needs are for our new teachers. Because we have first of development, but then you bring some new one, you want to make sure that they've also learned those new programs. And so looking at the onboarding procedure and making sure that that is meeting people's needs. And that can, would conclude my report, Madam Chair.
Fine, thank you very much. Exciting things.
Yes, I think so.
Are there any other personnel updates that I didn't mention, Chair?
There are none.
Any old business that needs to be discussed? Okay, new business. District report card.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Mr. Leboz asked me to review the district report card with you, and it's my honor to do that. Thank you, Mr. Leboz, for the opportunity. Um, I've given you a copy of it. And I, I call it the slightly abbreviated. What I find with the report card is that the state gives us lots and lots of graphs that I don't relate to our school because we are one school without a high school, so we're not talking about dropout rates and things like that. Um, and so I've, I've tried to distill it to the things that affect our school that are most salient to us. And, um, the first page sho- shows you our enrollment, which according to this chart here has declined a bit. We're at one forty-nine right now. We're at one sixty-four. And to remind you, we have about eighty percent of our, we have, um, I'm sorry, do you have a hard coffee?
I do not. I can share.
Oh, good stat. Oh, thank you. Paper for everybody. Okay, so, um, enrollment's declined a bit, however, we still have around eighty percent of the school-aged students attending our school. This is more a reflection of the birth rate in Nahand than anything else. Um, I'd also want to make a note that at the younger age, youngest scope of the school in kindergarten, we have twenty-one students. And our incoming kindergarten class is also gonna be around twenty-one students. So the younger student, the younger classes are, um, larger than they've been in the past. When I started, we had more than around fifteens, sixteens. And so it does seem like we are on upward trajectory despite the fact that this looks like one downward trajectory. That makes sense, people. On the next page, you'll see our attendance rate. There's percentage of days that students are in attendance. So our school, we're at ninety-four point three percent in twenty twenty-four. It's a bit better than the state, which was at ninety-three percent in twenty twenty-four. And I think that you can see that both us and the state are recovering from, um, probably COVID. You know, COVID, uh, lapses in attendance, but I'm happy with that rate. Please interrupt me if you have any questions as we go. Our chronic absenteeism rate, um, is good, is declining. We have seventeen percent um, rate of chronic absenteeism, two percent lower than the state. And I can let you know that I, I did make an effort to, I, I am making some different efforts to try to help with chronic absenteeism by talking with parents, meeting with parents. And more recently, I did make a trip over to Lynn District Court to file, um, a CRT, they call it, for children who need support. Um, it's tricky with our age group because it's not really about the students, more about the parents need, um, needing the support. But it is a good way to, you know, raise the issue with parents if it gets to that point. Where you see a student isn't coming as often as you'd like to see them. Arrived to school sick. But when we see, um, if there isn't, if there is habitual difficulty getting to school on time or at all, we want to address it, and we're trying to do that.
The strategy's unford, but the amount of parents that I've spoken with that, um, putting aside like people who have to meet struggles in the community and within your family, I think it is a school per view, like, let a partner as best as we can. But there is an attitude of like, well, it's okay, like, they're only doing fill in the blank, you know, and I, um, find that particularly worrisome for, I, I deal with high school. You know, they're only like, they're only independently reading. What does that really do, right? And I, um, I feel all kinds of ways, but I'll say for this meeting, like, it, it makes me scared for elementary. So it's great to see that that's going down. And I wholeheartedly think you're doing the right thing by filing CRTs. You can be supportive of the family and file CRT because it, you have to go through multiple steps before you get there.
Oh, yeah.
So these are for the really serious cases of parents that just aren't sending their kids to school. So I'm glad you're doing that. Five percent drop is really great, I think.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's impressive.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm happy about it. Um, next page talks about the average number of days absent. Average number for our students is ten. And in the state, it's twelve.
They're absent because they're sick.
So it's the, uh.
Kids are absent because they're sick.
Was there gender? You press something?
I, if folks could mute their, um, if folks could mute, that would be great. We could hear you talking to each other in the background, so you might want to mute just for privacy.
Right, so students, we don't want students to come to school who are sick, for, for sure. And I think that the ten, the number of ten is a comfortable number for us. If you think about yourself, how many days you might be absent from work any year, ten might be a little high or not, depending on your own health. So.
Well, one flu could knock you out for a week.
Right, exactly, exactly, exactly. Um, one stroke for even longer. I don't know. But, um, so I, I'm, I'm happy with that rate. Uh, we do send letters up to families who get, um, who are, do have a higher rate of absenteeism. But that's also dependent on, I'm going to go see my grandparents in Germany. You know, and, and we try to, we try to buffer that against what's the educational benefit to a trip or the family benefit to a trip. And what was the, on the other side, are they coming every day? Are they on time, which is great? Then we get into MCAS, which I have given you a report on. The, um, it, it reads, it reads left to right on the graph. I know the graph is black and white. Um, so the exceeding is seven in the state and, and ten percent in our district. Meeting is thirty-five in the state, fifty-three in our district. Of course, our district is our school. And then parsing meeting is thirty-nine in the state and twenty-seven in our district. So you can see the numbers. This ELA grades three to eight. Oh, three to six in our case, of course. Questions there? Moving on to math. Again, we're besting the state in, in mathematics. Seven percent are exceeding. We're, we're at twelve. The state's at thirty-three meeting. We're at forty. And, and then we're close with partially meeting. State at forty-one, us at forty. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm going over last year's data. Mostly what you can compare is similar. And we are hoping that our new math program will result in some growth. Any questions there?
So if I'm reading the graphs, and I'm sorry, because I don't have a color.
I apologize for that.
Yeah, I don't know correctly. There's, there's quite a few in the partially meeting and not meeting expectations.
It's true. Right, the state has forty-two percent partially meeting, while we have thirty-five percent, so. Um, ha- half of our students are either meeting or exceeding in our school. And the state is forty-two percent meeting or exceeding this past year.
I think that the, what, um, that I hear the chair like kind of highlighting is that the, the, um, you know, not meeting went up. Right, doubled, almost doubled. And, um, the
Yeah.
The partially meeting, um, the exceeds went down. It looks like the needs went up a little bit.
Right, yeah, year to year, the, um.
But it, it does feel like there's a little bit of a swing, you know, to the partially needs. Well, that went down, but like the, the not meeting expectations are just, um, and this is, this is part of what was in mind. Without having these results, and we talked about, I think, a three percentage point, or read the rule of last, last year's define. I think the conversation about the math specialist like really bears here, right? Like, I was thinking about that, so this kind of that's of the superintendent that he, you know, and, and Mr. Andrews, that they, they, that's a good move, it is a good move, right? In that we have to, we honed in on the relevancy of Nahand Public Schools' education for new families coming in, but I think we also have to like double down on making sure that's as best as possible so that we can be competitive for people coming into Nahand, wanting to make families here.
No, no, I completely agree. That's very, that's so very awesome.
Right.
You know, we can do better.
I'm confident that it can be better. That's what I'm trying to say. And we're trying something to change in the curriculum, but a math specialist would really help, right? And we are gonna get one part-time. And I hope that we can collect, you know, some ready data so that we can really push it. The principals. Right.
I love this, yeah, and I think if we can use intervention and with, paired with the coaching model, I think would be helpful. This year's, um, one of our smart goals was to increase the use of miniature to math and models. And so I'm really, um, pushing for that and finding a version of that around that, in that area.
Well, it's like English actually took a bigger hit.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Yes.
So, it's a good thing the specialist does both.
Yeah.
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 Yes. Yeah, it's a much better.
And, um, Mr. Andrews, the math curriculum that they're looking at, is it similar or the same as in Swamp Scott?
So we have looked at the one that Swamp Scott has, H M H into math. Um, and it is, and we're also looking at Eureka Math, which is similar to H M H. Um, we're making sure that they all may meet high remarks in the D S E's curate program. The state reviews the, the curriculum. And, and all the ones that we, we're looking at have high marks in all those areas. We're also talking to our colleagues in Swamp Scott. Um, because when they recently reviewed it, I know that they were really hoping to have Eureka Math as their math program, and I know that they ended up selecting H M H Math into math. And so, um, we're, we're partnering, we're partnering with them to find out how they're liking the program they have. How our program might, um, fit and how it aligns with what Swamp Scott has in terms of, um, materials and, and pedagogy.
That great.
Mm-hmm.
What, did we change, um, English curriculum or programs or anything over the last couple of years, or?
We haven't, we haven't really, um, changed our ELA programs significantly, uh, over the last couple of years. Let's see. In twenty twenty-three, we had thirty-seven percent of our students at partially or not meeting, and then this past year went into forty-eight. Is that what you're looking at?
Yeah.
It's, it's a little bit easier to look at like two buckets. Um, meeting or exceeding versus, um, partially meeting or not meeting.
Yeah.
And, um, I think if you look at it that way, we have fifty-two meeting or exceeding this past year. With the year before that, we had sixty-three, so it doesn't, we decreased by about a ten percent number.
Yeah, which I'm sure you have swings year to year, I mean, but I, I'm just curious, you know, if anything changed that would have caused that, or? That's all.
No, yeah, um, I, I do think it probably is more dependent on the student body, given our student body size. A small, small population change is gonna be changes on the, um, on the numbers there. That's something we're looking at for sure.
Class size must have an impact on that as well.
I would think, yes. I would think so.
It definitely does.
Definitely. Um, overall student progress. We have, um, this, this shows where our growth has been. And so math, fifty percent growth means that you are completely average. It's percentile, right? So fifty is, fifty is the average, it is the average. So our growth was not as high as we'd like it to be. It was forty-five in ELA, again, speaking to what, uh, Ms. Panessa referenced there. That means that we did not grow as much as our colleagues across the state in ELA. But in math, our percentile growth was a, just a hair better than the state at fifty-one percent. First, fifty-one percentile points is what it would be. In the past, we've had much higher percentile point gains, which is challenging to keep up for, in the long run. Next page gets into funding. Talks about state and local funds versus federal funds. Fortunately for Nahand, we are not too, too dependent on federal funds in the most recent year. Um, as I'm sure you, you're aware, they're talking about cutting back on federal funds significantly. We do get Title I funds. We get twenty thousand dollars for Title I. And that's probably one of the bigger buckets for federal funding. Special ed is much bigger. The circuit breaker?
Well, circuit breaker is not really considered a grant, because that's generated by your own programs, but the IDA grant, special education that funds Mary DeGuardia and Kathy Derlin, that's real money.
Mm-hmm, big money, okay. So this tells you how much we're spending per student, and we are pretty much in line with the state. Um, just about a thousand, maybe about a thousand dollars behind the state in spending per. Um just about a thousand, maybe about a thousand dollars behind the state in spending per student. Then the next page talks about our progress towards our goal of seeing students um. Meeting or exceeding their targets. And this is again about growth. So we we're we're classified as making moderate progress towards our targets. And you can see the requiring assistance intervention, that would be if we were probably another twenty points below that. But we're making moderate progress towards um me getting all students to succeed.
Want to move that needle.
Yeah, we sure do. Somebody who represents their higher is considered meeting or exceeding the targets.
Yes.
Think about those targets, they set those on the sort of raw scores. And to me, the sort of holy grail of the MCAS measurement is the student growth. Because what it does, it takes a group of students. Who performed at a certain level last year as compared to kids who also performed at that same level. And then compares them to that same group of kids statewide and see how much they grew and improved. So a high student growth profile is really the. Measure of what's going on in the classroom, because if you, if if we were a class and. Some of us were challenged learners, I was a challenged learner, and I'm one out of six kids. That could really hurt the raw score, but if I'm. In front of a really challenging teacher and even though I may not have scored very high. On the same test the year before, how I score this year underneath the influence of great teacher. Gives me a good student growth profile, even though I might not have a good raw score. And that's the measure of what teaching has done for me over that last year. So to me, that's the 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 number you want to look at, if you're a um. School in a very affluent town with lots of uh funding going to the school, then. The raw scores could be pretty high, but I argue you shouldn't be flying your flags or ran on down that. If your student growth profiles aren't high, then that means you're not moving those kids forward. You've got raw material that is capable of much more, but you haven't advanced them. So I go right to the student growth profile and I look at that number and see how that's changed. And fifty percent is sort of your target growth profile. And anything above that means you're exceeding the growth of that same profile of kids statewide. And it's across a huge number of kids, like Rob's scores are twelve. That's not gonna look very good compared to somebody who scores a hundred and twenty-nine or whatever, but if Rob goes from twelve to twenty-two. And the state group of kids like Rob only go from twelve to fifteen. That means not only has Rob done something, but the teachers working with him have done something. He's in an inspiring environment, he's with an inspiring teacher and he's growing even though his raw score isn't. Going way up the flight boat, so that's a really important number. The other thing that the year I think with regard to MCAS tests is that they've now taken away the requirement for kids at the high school level. To pass MCAS to be able to graduate, so that that sort of um. Warning and holding you accountable and getting used to that and pressure comes off. Then the test maybe isn't considered quite as important as it used to be, A by the teacher, B by the parents, and then by the kids. I I worry about that. How that plays out, not that I think MCAS should be the sole determiner whether whether a kid graduates from high school, but to. Remove that, I mean, still hold it as a statewide test. Is uh gonna be interesting to see how that plays out over the next three, four, or five years, so.
Do you see that statewide test going away?
Okay.
Do you see the statewide test of MCAS just going away?
Uh.
I wonder.
I I don't know, I don't want, I don't want to speculate if I get myself in trouble when I speculate, I I think they're. They needed to do some things to the testing and it was uh putting some kids at a disadvantage. And not measuring other styles and capabilities of learning. And holding it to sort of one fixture, so I I can see why they took that away. But I also think it has some collateral effects like everything that happens if it's done in a sweeping motion. So uh if time will tell on that, the jury's out as to how that will look.
It doesn't, it I agree, it doesn't look like it's going away, the governor um. Uh appointed a council of educators and others um to actually develop. Uh a K to twelve graduation standard. And um and so one, I was appointed to the to the council and yeah, so um. And and so one of these we are talking about is the ways in which the school districts are going to continue using MCAS not as a graduation determiner. Although uh high school districts can choose to do that if they want, it just is not going to be a statewide standard. Um but it doesn't feel like the test itself is going away, it feels like it'll be sandwiched in as an assessment with other things like superintendent, you've always saying. Um so that's, we just had our first meeting last year, so more to come, there'll be about a year project.
I feel the same, yeah, excited, yeah, it's exciting. Thank you so much.
My pleasure.
And moving on to future agenda items.
And this is going to be posted on the website, right?
Yeah, it's been in the newsletter.
For appointments of the state.
Yeah, yeah.
Mm hmm, all right, so future agenda items, um. Even though it's not on your agenda right there, I know it has to be added and and will be. Uh to either the next or the meeting right after that, the presentation and of approval of the math program. Because you have to approve curriculum changes, one of the. Uh aspects of of school by law that's in your ballpark, we can't just change a. Program, we like to get your approval to do that. Uh the the teachers, both Kayla and and Gabby, I believe, will be here that night to present the program, they've done stellar work. Looking at the programs, getting other teachers to pilot lessons with their kids, that's been going on from all three of the. Our math programs we're looking at, as well as contacting colleagues in other schools, so. Uh that was one of the things that came out of the new contract negotiations was establishing a curriculum review and implementation committee. With Kevin, myself, and two appointed teachers from the from the Hon Teachers Association, so that's, that's played out really well. And I'm encouraged by those uh three program reviews and. We did stress to make sure that if all things were equal, that we stayed in the Swamp Scott lane. If all things were equal, that there was a program that was clearly. Superlative to that, that we wouldn't just accept a a lesser program. That Eureka Square, I'm not the decider, uh is pretty well vetted and liked and used. Regionwide, um so what I mean, that. Is the one that has to be challenged, like watching the NT NCAA, as far as I'm concerned, it's it's going into the tournament. Rated highly, doesn't mean it's not going to get knocked off by, you know, teachers looking at the implementation of it and how it actually, where the rubber hits the road. I remember we adopted through a very extensive process with the state math consultant hired by Rockboard. We ended up with a program called Envisions, which you see used in a lot of places. But at the teacher level, it was just too hard to implement and they moved away from it, so what it could do never came to fruition. And uh we didn't know that, you know, we got sold not just a bill of goods, it was a great program, but. A lot of elementary teachers do not have background in schooling and math and math instruction. And and many of them are English language arts folks in terms of their grounding. And a program has to be usable for kids as well as teachers and also parents to be able to work with their kids. So having resources that a parent can easily sit with their child in and do work outside is extremely important. So it's going to be interesting to see what the final recommendation is, but there are three really, really good programs. Where the one that you're using right now, I I don't believe even gets rated by the DESI program. So there's sort of no ability to see where it's at and it's not a widely used program. It used to be, but everybody had sort of migrated away from it. And these three, especially Eureka Squared and Everyday, not Everyday Math, the the first program.
HMH, uh very.
Oh, I ready.
Yeah, the the I ready one has a a really positive parental connection piece.
Yeah.
And that's where you sort of have to weigh the power of those two situations. Depending on uh, you know, where a kid's coming from, but our teachers are taking seriously, they're piloting lessons. Uh it's led by two extra exemplary teachers that are helping us with that process, so I'm I'm encouraged about it.
And then that's wonderful because you want them to be comfortable working with it.
Yeah.
That's great.
And with the visions, we, everybody's on board, teachers had their vote in there. But it, in reality, when they started to implement it, it took too much time and it just, they swayed away from it, so.
That's how we're beginning now, because. Yeah, it's very time consuming.
Hopefully this time next year, we'll be looking at a set of scores that really shows some differences and some changes and um not instantaneous.
No.
Because every time you change a program, there's sort of a natural dip in performance as you make the change in program, believe it or not, so. You have to be able to weather that a little bit. We hear that in a lot of places about. I don't know, a little bit of a call at this. Trying to get through the weather of the storm, but it but it is true, you can't put in a brand new program and expect instantaneous results. So I'm excited about it.
Me too.
Sure.
That's great.
Thanks for funding the uh change, getting it in the budget.
So the uh, we were going through the other item, so there's that one, uh there's mandatory votes on. Uh whether you participate in the school choice program or not statewide, if you don't. Vote to not participate by default, according to state law, you become a school choice school. So it's an annual item if you don't want to participate in the school choice program. And then you also, because you don't have middle school and high school kids educated in Nahon. You have to request a waiver and dispensation or whatever from the state to not operate a K to twelve school district. And you tell them we tuition our kids to Swamp Scott, that's an annual vote of the school committee. Uh at some point, you have to uh do an annual evaluation of the superintendent. And then we again still have our mystery Essex Tech school board appointee. Blooming around us at some, so we'll we'll get closure on that at one point.
The best one is somebody.
Oh, I'll make a call, and I remember hearing the name because uh Kristen Taylor asked us.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Joe, I'll I'll call her till we get some closure on that one.
Could we just, could we ask all the parents of like recent graduates, not it, um and other um parents. Like who go there, like see if any of them would want to be the representative, just because they've got the most skin in the game, you know?
Yeah, I I'm not familiar with how that process has occurred in the past, um.
I think we had somebody for a while, didn't have to think about it through the pandemic, and then that person's kid graduated.
And it may have been that their term was just up.
Right.
And that they were possibly willing to continue if you couldn't find anybody else, um.
I mean, I mean, it's good to bring in new people.
Seventeen districts or whatever, right, are part of the Essex Tech Board.
Right.
Um.
But you could ask Heidi or Tio. You know, who the parents are and maybe send a note out to all of them, as long as you send the same note to all of them, right? And they could either themselves or maybe you represent, you know, uh. Tell you of somebody else in the eye that was was interested in you, maybe just former teachers here too. Who knows, I don't know.
I I really know nothing.
Yeah, six, ten. I know a lot about us, but.
I don't know.
You're right over there, do you live in there? There are many shout out, there we go, but I, the only way I could do that is to. This, you know.
You know, what have we seen in the budget, you know, that uh you were down to nine kids instead of fourteen, is that the plan?
Yeah, yeah.
Across all four grades, so.
A great school for the right kid, oh yeah, we just have to find the right. Number of them, it's great for them to, a little tiny sound like that, it's important for us to have representation. Just gonna get done, happy to help in any way. If you want me to call Heidi, I don't want to do that, okay?
All right, well, if there are no further um agenda items and they're not here, or if anyone else has anything they want to add, then um. Could I have a motion to adjourn this meeting at eight oh four?
Motion to adjourn the meeting tonight, March twenty-fifth at eight oh.
Do I have a second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I hope you think that one will be.
The favorite one, they signed off.
And I I think I was confused, was the, were they talking to each other or were they trying to talk to us?
I don't think they were talking to us.
Okay.
I think it was so.
I don't know.
About what we were talking about.
Yeah, right. Hey, my kid was sick, what are you picking on me for?
I was like, is there? So it's like, we're probably not talking to you like you're. Can we control CRDs?
Shut them up. I tried to turn the volume down on the on the uh thing itself, on the computer itself, so we don't hear the computer, yeah.
You can make it so that it views people when they enter the room.
Hmm. It's a lot of new features in here, I got eyebrows, I got purple eyebrows a second ago on Zoom.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, you can do also lots of like same things.
Yeah, he was playing around when I.
I was, yeah.
I I look really nice in a mustache.